Good evening and welcome to an opportunity for me to turn my speakers off one moment, folks. Sorry. At least I know where to find that now. All right. Good evening and welcome to tonight's Monroe City Council meeting. This is the regular business meeting for Tuesday, August 22nd, 2023. The time right now is 7:00 PM. Going to ask that our clerk of the council, please, I'm sorry, that our clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers present in establishing a quorum or councilmembers, Fulter, Kenny, Fisher, and Scarborough.
Thank you. And I did hear earlier that councilmember Gamble would be joining us remotely, so we will check the attendees list to see if he's there. Okay, we will move him forward and we'll announce for the record when he comes into the meeting. Also, we heard from councilmember Davis earlier today that he would not be here this evening. I think that that was out of illness. And I think the same thing for councilmember Hanford. So unless there's objection, we'll consider their absences as excused. Saying no objection, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. And that item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Kenny, will you please lead us in the pledge? Thank you. Thank you. And councilmembers, I do have a proclamation that I was going to announce today under the mayor's report. We have members of an organization here that would like to receive the proclamation. So unless there's objection, I'd like to go ahead and add announcements and presentations just before public comments. And to read the proclamation in and invite both April and Heather forward to say a few words. Is there any objection to that? All right, thank you. So this is recognizing August 31st, 2023 as International Overdose Awareness Day. Whereas North America continues to experience the highest drug-related mortality rate in the world, accounting for one in four drug-related deaths globally. And whereas addiction is a disease and the, and International Overdose Awareness Day aims to raise awareness of overdose and reduce the stigma of substance use-related deaths. And whereas International Overdose Awareness Day acknowledges the grief felt by families and friends who have been impacted by this disease. And whereas this day provides an opportunity for people to publicly mourn for loved ones, some for the first, some for the first time without feeling guilt or shame. And whereas this day seeks to send a strong message to current and former substance users that they are valued and supported. And whereas this day raises awareness of the need to treat drug-related harm as a public health issue and invest in practices that save lives and build communities. And whereas International Overdose Awareness Day provides an opportunity for Monroe residents to stand beside those who have lost loved ones to an overdose and to support those who have substance abuse disorder and diligently and are diligently working hard toward recovery. And whereas the Monroe community has several facilities that provide services for substance abuse, such as the Recovery Center at Evergreen Health Monroe, Ideal Options, and C Mar. Now, therefore, I Jeffrey Thomas, or the city of Monroe, Washington, to hereby recognize August 31st, 2023 as International Overdose Awareness Day and encourage Monroe's residences, residents and businesses to cultivate a culture of caring and enhanced engagement around addiction and eliminate the stigma associated with addiction. They invite Heather and April to come forward and to say a few words.
In the field of addiction services, and I am here today to thank you for the proclamation and to cultivate that compassion and that level of awareness to those that are still out there suffering. I know that overdose and addiction has touched pretty much everybody's lives in one form or another, whether it's one degree or no degrees of separation. I look forward to serving this community going forward and helping those by being a beacon of light to those still in the darkness and helping them cultivate a pathway to recovery. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Heather Schornbost. I wanted to say thank you and hopefully I can get through this without crying. I am very grateful to be here tonight. I also have lived experience. I would have dressed up, but today I was in outreach with some of our friends, not as lucky as some of us. And I just want to let you know that I am the new pure outreach specialist for Monroe through Ideal Option. And we will do our part to make sure that our brothers and our sisters and our moms and our pets have a voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Did I understand that there was somebody here from Conquer also that might want to say a few words about the proclamation? And also Eric from Evergreen Recovery. Coming up to the podium.
All right. Thanks for the recognition. My name is Jordan Miller. I'm representing Conquer, also known as Conquer Addiction, depending on what you may have heard. We know we are more of a newcomer on the block compared to some of the more established agencies. However, at the same time, you know, thank you again for the opportunity to speak on this. You know, again, appreciate the opportunity to discuss lived experience, right? And, you know, just the possibility that recovery can happen for anybody. And I mean, it's something that proves true just as far as, you know, in our daily experience and sometimes the ones that you've been following for a while, they've fallen off the radar and you think that there's no hope for them, there's still hope for them. And as far as that goes, that's what we want to be able to continue to assist. You know, to help again, you know, reduce the stigma, bring this out in the light, allow you know, the community to really have positive discussion about what to do, right? Instead of again, focusing on solutions instead of you know, the tremendous pain and sorrow that it has caused the community. As far as that goes, we offer plenty of different services as far as ways to make that happen. And we just welcome anybody who has any more questions to give us a call. But thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us, Mayor Thomas, City Councilmembers. My name's Eric Britt. I'm the director over at the Recovery Center just across the street at Evergreen Health Monroe. I would simply echo everything that Jordan and April said. I can say I've been working in the field and in the opioid epidemic for the last 16, 17 years and the Recovery Center is seeing and hearing about more overdoses and overdose deaths than we have at any other point in my career. Whether it was through Oxycontin or heroin or anything else with fentanyl, it's noticeably different. And it's, it's also hit very close to home for the Recovery Center in the last few months this summer. So we really appreciate this proclamation and personally, I'm honored and proud to live and work in a town that is taking another step to recognize this and to treat this issue as, as a public, public health issue, as was in the proclamation and less of a criminal justice issue, which we all firmly believe it should be. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. I'm going to invite the speakers to come forward. Councilmembers, will you join me for a photo and we'll present the proclamation? Thank you. We're gonna go over here. We like the flag.
Thank you, everyone.
I like it. Oh, it's okay that that's closed because it's taped. Okay, and I just, I just want to underscore how much I appreciate the work that the organizations are doing here in our community to help people with, with chemical dependency. So thank you. All right, we're going to go on to the next item on the agenda and that is public comments. This is a time set aside for members of the community to speak to the city council on any issue related to the city of Monroe, except any quasi judicial matter that is subject to a public hearing. Three minutes are afforded to each speaker. If you're interested in speaking this evening and you're here in the audience, please raise your hand. All right, saying none, I then turn to the attendees list. If there's anybody who is in attendance remotely that would like to speak, please go ahead and raise your hand in Zoom or hit star nine if you're on the phone. All right, saying none, we're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. That would be the consent agenda. I turn to the council. I see councilmember, before I acknowledge councilmember Scarborough, state that councilmember Gamble has joined us. I saw that he joined us just a couple of minutes after, after seven. Good evening, councilmember Gamble. Everybody wave at council.
Good evening.
All right. Councilmember Scarborough, do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Okay, I have a motion to approve the consent agenda from councilmember Scarborough, a second from councilmember Kenny. Any discussion on the motion? There being none, I'll call for the question. All in favor?
Bye.
All opposed? Motion passes six zero. Thank you, everybody. Next item on the agenda is item number six. This is new business 6.1, amending amendments, MMC Chapter 6.12, Solid Waste Management to update the city's solid waste regulations and statutory citations. And Megan Darrow will be presenting this.
Good evening. Thank you guys for your time. It's been a while since I've been before council, so I'm Megan Darrow. I work out of Public Works. And tonight I am here to request that council move to accept as first reading ordinance number 152023, amending chapter 6.12 MMC Solid Waste Management, updating and clarifying the city's solid waste regulations, including updating statutory citations and other references therein for accuracy, providing severability and establishing an effective date. Monroe Municipal Chapter 6.12 describes requirements for implementing and regulating the city's storm solid waste management program through an interlocal agreement that the city has with Snohomish County. The current MMC Chapter 6.12 was originally adopted in 1990 when many of the cities and towns within Snohomish County were operating local municipal landfill sites. The city is currently working with the county to update the city's solid waste management interlocal agreement, which will be brought before council for approval in September. Many of the references in the current interlocal agreement and the statutory citations that are described in chapter 6.12 are outdated. They're obsolete or otherwise do not reflect the city's current practices. So updating chapter 6.12 will ensure the code aligns with the current RCWs as well as the updated ILA that we'll be bringing forward next month for approval. Any questions?
Are there any questions from council or a motion? Councilmember Kenny?
I moved to accept as first reading ordinance number 0152023, amending chapter 6.12 MMC Solid Waste Management, updating and clarifying the city's solid waste regulations, including updating statutory citations and other references therein for accuracy, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
I have a motion from councilmember Kenny, a second from councilmember Fulter for the requested action shown in new business item 6.1 on the screen. Any discussion on the motion? There being none, I'll call for the question. All in favor?
Bye.
All opposed? Motion passes six zero. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. We're gonna go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. That item would be councilmember reports. We'll start remote. Councilmember Gamble, go ahead.
No report.
Yeah. Councilmember Kenny? Thank you, councilmember Fulter. Thank you. Councilmember Scarborough? I will not be here next Tuesday. We don't have a council meeting next week. No, we're just giving her our time. Since, since you're not going to be here, we're just going to cancel it. Okay. All right. Thank you, councilmember Scarborough. And I didn't miss any, oh, councilmember Fisher.
You get the mics on?
Oh yeah, please lean into your mics and turn your mics on. Thank you. Sorry about that, councilmember Gamble. We just volunteered you for a bunch of stuff.
Right.
Well, I won't be here next week. Thanks for cancel, canceling our council meeting. Not a whole lot, just enjoying the city parks and being outside as much as possible. The weather is amazing. The kids have enjoyed movies in the park or movies under the moon, something along those lines. And yeah, just enjoying our parks. I've got kids that are playing sports in them and they're great. So just kind of enjoying our, our town. And kudos to whoever put together how to go about getting a permit for a block party. It was really easy. So as far as, I don't know if any of you have ever put together a block party, but as far as having like insurance, supplemental insurance and all of those things that on the city website, you can get it and it actually has a hyperlink to go to an insurance company. And it's incredibly cheaper than doing it yourself and trying to find somebody on Google. And it was really, really easy. Put in a code and all of the stipulations that the city requires are already on there. And so they just shoot it out to you. So goodness whoever set that up because it made my life a lot easier. So thank you. That's all I got.
Thank you. All right. I'll go ahead and turn now to staff department reports. We'll start off with the police department with Chief Charlie. Good evening, chief.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Pleasure to be here tonight. You have your council packet. And on my report contained therein, I would just point out one thing is we continue our march to get fully staffed. We have recently hired a lateral candidate, Cheyenne Rosa has joined our team and we're excited to have her with Monroe Police Department. And if you have any questions, I'm available.
Does anybody have any questions for Chief Charlie? Thank you, chief.
Thanks, chief.
Next report we have is from Rachel Adams for the Human Services June and July 2023 report. Okay.
Thank you. So for this evening's Human Services Report, I will just point you to the report in the packet for the update on the actions that the Community Human Services Advisory Board has recently taken. I do want to note that we did receive a state appropriations from Senator Hawkins through the operating budget. So we are currently working with the board on some recommendations on how to spend those funds on a co-responder program. The Association of Washington Cities did award the city $116,000. That was a partial award. A portion of that, about $35,000, will be going towards the Human Services Coordinator position. That's Rachel Adams. She's done a remarkable job at finding funding for her position over the last 18 months. And then $61,000 for case managers and mental health professionals. So again, we're working with our community partners and our co-responder program and our Community Human Services Advisory Board, looking for a recommendation to come back to council as to where to allocate those funds. We have been participating at a staff level in the regional effort to distribute opioid settlement funds, not the city's funds. These are funds that Snohomish County was awarded. So again, there's a couple of items listed in the report this evening that gives a little more information about how those funds are currently being distributed. And then finally, we have been operating our mobile mental health program now for two months and have gotten, I think, really good response. And our mobile mental health professional is working very, very closely with both our police department and our other service providers in town. So you can actually access that program by calling 911 or 988 and she will be dispatched. VOA has been really impressed with how that program is operating and they are considering bringing on a second mental health professional so we can offer the service in the valley seven days a week. So that's very exciting news. And things continue to happen in the human services world these days. So thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Administrator Knight? All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. And that is the Community Development Report with Kate Turtler. And Kate, I think you're in the audience.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Thomas. And you're, the Community Development Report is in your packet. I do want to bring your attention to just a few of the items. The first one being the City Hall project. We are treating it the same as any other private development, which means it had to go through a site plan approval as the first step, which was completed back in June. The next step was the middle's both building permit and civil plan review. The building piece of it, they are actually in the second round of review, so that is progressing nicely. The next project I'd like to bring your attention to is actually just a tiny little footnote in the project. And that's the Foxborough 18-unit Townhouse Project. The last building just received final certificate of occupancy. So that's pretty exciting. That project is across the street from Housing Hope on West Main Street. The next project is the Pickleball Court at Sky Valley Park. Just wanted to let you know, the hearing examiner did recommend or approve the project. It is now been sent to the Washington State Department of Ecology where it will be in review for 21 days. And then finally, I want to bring your attention to all of the flyers at the end of our report. Those were put together. It was a cooperative exercise with the cities of Duval, Gold Bar, Lake Stevens, Stanwood, Snohomish, and Sultan. And it was led by Chris, Stacy Criswell and Ted Corey in our building department. And so those are the flyers to help our community as you're moving forward with the international changes to the building codes and the wire, excuse me, the wildland urban interface, which are going to be some significant changes for developments beginning this fall, depending on when the state takes final action. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Kate Turtler? I don't see any. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next item then is 8.4, Public Works Department, August 2023 report with Director Roberts. Director Roberts? Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. The report is in your packet. There's an update there on the BioSolids Project Sledge Dryer down at the wastewater treatment plant. Pretty exciting project that's progressing along nicely through the Washington State Department of actually Commerce Energy Savings Process. Second thing in the report, Public Works has been doing a little bit more outreach this summer. So we have in there the Lake Thai Science Day that was actually led by Megan with the help of Vince Bertrand a few Saturdays ago. Pretty good turnout for that. 75 people showed up for a first year event. That's pretty impressive. So anyway, that concludes my report, Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions for Director Roberts? Thank you very much. Next report we have is 8.5 Finance Department with Director Hassert. Good evening, Director Hassert.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. So the Finance Department report is in your packet. The one thing that I wanted to bring to your attention is the real estate excise taxes. If you've taken a close look at that, you will notice it's been a little bit of a roller coaster ride over the first seven months. However, we are still ahead of budgeted projections. So that's always nice to see. And as we pointed out in the report, I'm still cautiously optimistic that we are going to be fine with real estate excise taxes, given the strength of what we are seeing with regards to building permits. As Ms. Totolett just pointed out, Foxborough's just been finalized. We've had plenty of permits still being issued. That tells me that there's still stock out there to sell. And just anecdotally, I keep hearing from those that I know in the real estate market that when things do go up for sale, they are still selling pretty well. So with that in mind, you know, we never know what the Fed's going to do for the rest of the year, but right now, again, I'm cautiously optimistic that our REIT will still come in as expected. And with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions for Director Hassert? Thank you very much. All right. Next item we have on the agenda now is moving into item nine, Mayor and Administrative Reports. I'm going to go ahead and go on with 9.1, City Administrator Report Extended Agenda, and then into 9.2, City Administrator Report. Deborah?
Thank you, Mayor. The Tuesday, September 5th meeting has been canceled in observance of Labor Day. And then for Tuesday, the 12th Business Meeting, we have a couple of items that are just housekeeping, some announcements and presentations, one of, for Hispanic Heritage Month. And then on the consent agenda, the regular accounts payable, payroll minutes, and then reimbursement resolution for the local program. Our 2023-2024 Human Services Award RFP, acceptance of the Senator Hawkins Funds, the AWC Alternative Response Team Grant, and then a local business human resource booklet. For the, don't have any public hearings or final actions planned, but we do have a new business item, resolution for the interfund loan, Economic Development Advisory Board appointment, the Lodging Tax Advisory Commission appointments, and then the Salary Commission appointments. So a lot of appointments happening on that meeting on the 12th. And then the regular staff reports and administrative reports.
Any questions about that? Everybody, any absences? Oh, councilmember Gamble, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, if I'm not mistaken, I think that September is also Hydrocephalus Awareness Month.
You're correct, and it's under the mayor's report tonight.
Ah, didn't see it in the, in the agenda there, so sorry.
Any other? Any other questions for that part of the administrative report? All right.
All right. So for the City Administrator Report, Snohomish County reached out to us and advised us that the Snohomish County Solid Waste Advisory Committee, the SWAC, is seeking elected officials to serve. They meet virtually from 3:00 to 5:00 PM as needed. When I checked on the website, it looks like they meet very infrequently, at most two times per year. So if somebody on council is interested in participating in that regional commission, you can contact Jody and she can follow up and give you additional information on how to apply. We are currently located at our temporary city hall. And so we are scheduling an open house for city council to come over and take a look at our new facility, our temporary facility. And that would be Tuesday, September 26th. That is a regular business meeting night. And we thought that we would open up the doors for council members to come in and take a look between 4:30 and 6:30 PM. So wander in at any time between those hours and somebody will be available there to take you on a tour. That would be September 26th. You're welcome. Yep, no worries. Council mailboxes, if you Council mailboxes, if you haven't found them already, they are currently located at the Parks and Public Works Building at seven six nine Village Way. So you can access your mail. Your current badge will provide you access to those mailboxes. So if you're looking for your hard mail, you can go and pick those up at that location. And then last item, we just received notice from Senator Hawkins today that he will be hosting a town hall in Monroe on Wednesday, September sixth at six thirty PM and that will be here in the school district boardroom. So if you are interested or I can't remember those dates or didn't get a picture of it from the PowerPoint presentation, you could always go and look that up on Senator Hawkins, either his Facebook page or his website.
All right. Any questions on that part of the Administrator's Report? All right. And I pretty much saw everything this evening for the, for the temporary city hall.
Yes, it doesn't take long to tour it.
You will not need two hours. Okay. Yes. I'd recommend taking turns going through as well, so. You know, and with that said, I really appreciate what staff is doing. It's gonna be two years and when you go in to this space, you'll see how crammed people are into spaces. So people will probably be doing a lot more remote work for the next couple of years and I just ask for the council members to give grace because we do, they're in very tight quarters there, so. Yes, Councilmember Fisher. I can't, I can't push that button now. Gotta clap twice. And then move the microphone up.
I forgot to mention council reports that I did actually go and tour the new city hall building. And yes, you're correct, it is extremely tight in there. And again, we had talked a little bit when I was in there and the appreciation to put up with that kind of a work environment. It is closed quarters. So as we talked up there, keep an eye on the prize and there's a light at the end of the tunnel, but you will definitely have some grace from me because, man, it didn't look like a real great office space, so.
Keep your head up. They have nice views, some of them. But multiple people in a very small place have nice views, yeah. All righty. Then for me, from Mayor's report, just a couple of items. One, had lunch today with, with Deborah and also with her new superintendent. I had a good time just getting to know a little bit about, about him and some of the things they're working on at the school district. So just wanted to share with you that that he had reached out to us, that we met over lunch and I've had a really nice conversation just about the city of Monroe, about our relationship with the school district and just some broad things related to the school district and where he comes from and so on and so forth. So I am really happy to be working with him and look forward to building an even stronger relationship with our school district folks. Next item I wanted to remind you of is the parade this Saturday. And so just make certain that you have your drivers and all that other good stuff aligned. I secured my driver this morning, so next year I will try to do that a lot earlier. But and I do thank Councilmember Scarborough for working on the signs and everything. So thank you. And then, so the parade and then also we have a ribbon cutting on Thursday night and that ribbon cutting is for the the new pathway that goes across the fairgrounds. So I trust that all of you were invited to it. I would tell you what time it is, but I don't want to get it wrong. So okay, staff's telling me six, I'm gonna go with six. So just, just take a look at whatever email you've got. Remember the, the fair is in town. So you're gonna wanna allow yourself time to park, to walk and, and all that other good stuff. All right. I think we're meeting at the VIP. Okay, so look at your email. Don't listen to me. I was right. Meeting outside the VIP cabin and then we're gonna walk outside the, through the gate. Okay. All right. Sounds good. And you should have tickets to get in and tickets to park. Yes, okay. Jake says yes, and I remember getting them. If you don't have them, please let somebody on staff know so that we can get those for you. All right. And then the last item that I wanted to take a moment to update you on is this afternoon, this late afternoon, we met, staff and I met with the Department of Transportation, three people and also with the Fire District to talk about some of the issues that we've had in the Highway Two bypass. Had a really good conversation with them. The Department of Transportation has been a really good partner in working to help us out with the fires that have been occurring there. They will be working with our staff to walk through the site and to see what material may be in the site that may need to be removed. And we talked about different concepts on how to secure the site and things related to the fires that have been occurring there. So I do appreciate all the work that staff is doing and as we get more information, we'll go ahead and share that to you, share that with you. One, one of the things that I felt was important was the Department of Transportation's willingness to come out and walks, walk the site on a periodic basis with the police department and potentially with the Fire District just all together once a month or once every couple of months, depending upon raining outside and cold versus hot like it is right now and, and just taking stock of what's on the site and, and what may need to occur to ensure that that area is safe. So if anybody has any questions for me about that, feel free to let me know. Are there any questions for anything I presented so far? All right. With all that said, I am done with my, with the Mayor's report. We now have a need for an executive session. This is under ten point one. We have a need for potential litigation, person to RCW forty two point thirty point one ten subsection one subsection little I and property acquisition person to RCW forty two point thirty point one ten subsection one, some section little B for an initial fifteen minutes. Okay. And the way this will work I cough, who then will announce it both in this room and also online. When that executive session is over, we will reconvene as a council with potential for action to occur. Any questions from anybody? All right, we are now in executive session beginning at seven thirty eight PM.
The executive session has been extended ten minutes. The executive session has been extended ten minutes. The executive session has been extended five minutes. The executive session has been extended five minutes.
Okay, well, we are back out of the executive session. Councilmember Kenny?
I move to add an item to the agenda regarding the acquisition of the US Bank property.
I have a motion from Councilmember Kenny, a second from Councilmember Foulter. Any discussion on the motion? Saying none, I'll call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes two four five zero. I was saying six zero earlier today, wasn't I? Okay, so for the record, let's make certain that the minutes reflect that wherever I said six zero this evening, it should have been five zero or whatever the proper count of council members would be. Okay. Councilmember Kenny?
I move to authorize the mayor to sign the option agreement with US Bank National Association as seller and the city of Monroe as buyer for real property identified by tax parcel number zero zero five one seven four zero one nine zero zero six zero zero.
I have a motion for Councilmember Kenny, a second from Councilmember Scarborough for motion two that showed on the screen. Any discussion on the motion? Yes. We're gonna have a brief staff overview.
Thank you.
Thank you. Administrator Nate?
Thank you. The offer price on the property is one point one million dollars. The earnest money deposit is thirty three thousand dollars. The review period for due diligence is ninety days. Thank you.
Thank you for your motion, Councilmember Kenny, and for your second, Councilmember Scarborough. And excuse me? Not amended. And Deborah, thank you. All right. Any discussion on the motion? Saying none? I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes five zero. We have no further business this evening. So there being no further business this evening, and if there is no objection, we are adjourned. No objection, we are adjourned. Have a great week, everybody.
G'day.
See you September.